Sheriff and Mayor from Rogers City, they come to our facility up north all the time.
Mm-hmm.
They're like, "Man, you can't smell anything." I mean, you never know, I guess it's up, you know?
Right.
But, yeah.
Right. Well, and as you're redoing the building, it may be something you may want to take into consideration now is, I guess, the prudent thing to tell you. I don't think it's something everyone would put in writing, but that's what could happen and, you know. So it's a prudent thing to take into account. So having said that, special land use review standard E, any other discussion? All in favor of accepting it, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign? It's accepted.
Item F, if the proposed special land use shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, and copies of all applicable permits shall be submitted to the city. We addressed that previously, they've submitted a lot of paperwork and they have ways to go. If they are approved here, there will be additional licensing requirements from the city and the state before they can open. So that would be addressed as a condition of approval if you are inclined to approve it at some point.
Commissioners, special land use review standard F, any discussion? All in favor then of accepting it, please say aye.
Aye.
F is accepted. Finally, we go to the adult use marijuana establishment, special land use standards. And there are a number of these.
Yeah, so we don't always do this with, well, most special land uses in the city don't have this long of a list of, you know, use-specific requirements. So in the report, we first talked about the general site plan of use standard, the six of those. Then we have the general special land use standards that would apply to any special land use in the city. Now, these are further standards that only apply to adult use marijuana establishments and no other type of business in the city. And we have these standards for other types of, for other types of businesses and other land uses as well. Obviously, they wouldn't apply here. So we're going to start, this is in section 1704 subsection F, subsection five. And then we're starting at item B here, and continuing through item M, so there are a bunch of them. Most of these we've talked about already, so I don't know that we need to go into, we don't have a lot of further analysis here, but we did skip item A because that addresses the security plan with which the statute precludes us from talking about that, you know, and having that information public. So with that, I will start with subsection B, which addresses the separation distances. And as I mentioned earlier tonight, the ordinance does not allow an establishment within a thousand feet of a preschool or childcare center, whether or not it is within the city, a public or private K-212 school, or within 500 feet of the property within the C-2 central business district. And each of those requirements are met, as I said, this is an eligible property.
Commissioners, adult use marijuana establishment, special land use standards, and I'm going to shorten that to special land use standards going forward. B, any discussion? All in favor of accepting, please say aye.
Aye.
Item C pertains to odors, and so what this does is it sets out a series of standards and says your building must be equipped with, you know, various odor control measures, and we added some language at the end of this that allows for kind of an alternative proposal if the applicant demonstrates that there's some alternative system that would satisfy the desired outcome, which is that there would be no different order outside of the building or property. So as I mentioned, there's a letter that was submitted from the plumbing and mechanical inspector from PCI, which states that the current air filtration in the building is sufficient for odors because there will be no consumption, growing, cleaning, processing, or processing of marijuana on the site. You'd expect odors to be minimal. So we believe that you can approve the existing air filtration system as adequate based on that letter. However, if you are inclined to approve this, we did add a suggested condition of approval, which is item 13, which states that the applicant shall insult additional filtration in the building to the satisfaction of the city should there be any complaints regarding odors. So that is something, to Marty's point earlier, we did, we thought about the same thing, and I think if it becomes an issue, it would be dealt with right away.
Commissioners then, on special land use standard C, any discussion? All in favor of accepting C is written, please say aye.
Aye.
Accepted.
Item D states that these establishments shall be operated and maintained at all times so that any byproducts or waste of any kind shall be properly and lawfully kept and disposed of so as to preclude any risk of harm to the public, health, safety, and welfare. According to the application, the applicant has kind of outlined this procedure for how they handle waste and destruction of the product. So it says here that the manager will note the weight of the waste and then reboot from the inventory. It's then deposited into a receptacle, which is in front of a camera. And once that waste, once that weight limit is reached, it is ground in a food processor and mixed with at least 51% coffee grounds and is then disposed of into just the regular trash. There is a receptacle, actually, so one of the things that we identified in the site plan was the lack of knowing about where the waste receptacle is going to be. That's something that they will need to address on their security plan and how it's going to be secured and things like that. So I don't know, are there questions amongst the commissioners? To me, I wasn't aware of this coffee grounds thing and how they dispose of it, so that, if you have a question for the applicant now, it would be an appropriate time to kind of ask some of those. We're getting into some operational stuff now, so I guess it might be helpful to have the applicant describe kind of how some of the operational things are handled without obviously getting into some of those security issues that you don't need to discuss.
Well, again, could the odor issue come up with that, the way it's disposed of?
It'll smell like coffee.
It would seem like it, yeah. It would seem like that, that would...
They should probably sell it. I was just going to say, where do you get the coffee?
It goes on with me, actually.
So actually, we haven't up north had enough to get rid of. We keep it in a secure area, I think. But what I believe state law is it needs to go to a landfill that has people working at it, it's like a man or an, it can't just be thrown out of it, basically. So we've never actually had to go across that yet. Even if you drop it on the floor, you drop some product on the floor, it's contaminated, not the state says.
Yeah.
So then, we've been operation up north for nine or 10 months, and I don't, I don't think we have a coffee can full yet. So still sitting in our secured area at the facility.
And the secured area is under lock and key and all of that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah.
So to clarify, that was one of my questions, what actually is the waste and it is the contaminated product?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as it touches the floor, it's contaminated, they call it. So I've had our employees drop some and...
And do you think it really is that there's been minimal dropping or just the cans sort of emptied or...
I, it's all weighed up, so it's, it's in a, you know, it's in a jar, and if the weight doesn't match, it's...
Yeah, there's cameras everywhere.
You can't walk anywhere in the building and hold something up where it's not being seen.
Thank you.
No problem.
The commissioners? The special land use standard D, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting it, please say aye.
Aye.
Accepted then.
Item E states that the establishment shall not operate in a residence or any building used wholly or partially for residential purposes. And there is no residence in this building according to the site plan. So that standard would be satisfied, that's an easy one.
Commissioners, special land use standard E, any discussion? All in favor of accepting, please say aye.
Aye.
Standard is accepted.
Item F, any portion of the structure or energy uses that can exceed typical residential use such as the grow room and the storage of any chemicals such as herbicides, pesticides, fertilizers shall be submitted to inspection and approval by the fire department. To ensure compliance with applicable fire codes, any fuel, fertilizer, pesticide, fungicide, rodenticide, et cetera, or other substances toxic to wildlife, children, or pets, shall be stored in a securely locked area and be in compliance with state pesticide laws and regulations. This is a, not a grow operation, so those issues, you know, we don't anticipate any chemicals or anything like that stored on the site because it's really selling primarily steel packages to the customer.
Commissioners, special land use standard F, any discussion? All in favor of accepting it, as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Is accepted.
Item G, marijuana establishment shall not be operated from a business that also sells alcoholic beverages or tobacco products. And either of those activities are proposed on the site. We did include a condition of approval to that effect, although it is not something that was contemplated by the application.
It's also not allowed by statute.
Correct.
So are there, the name of the facility is Meds Cafe, which is fairly general. I mean, are there other things sold or plans to do so? I mean, obviously not alcohol or tobacco, but...
Michigan statute doesn't allow it. It's got, they have to specifically marijuana.
That's it.
Any other discussion on the special land use standard G? All in favor of accepting it then, please say aye.
Aye.
Is accepted.
Item H does have a short one, no drive-through facilities shall be permitted and are proposed.
Again, commissioners, special land use H, any discussion? All in favor of accepting, please say aye.
Aye.
Item I, these establishments shall comply at all times and in all circumstances with the MTRMA, that's the Michigan Taxation and Regulation of Marijuana Act, and the rules for adult use marijuana establishments as amended, which is promulgated by ALARA. And that is something that, if approved, we would include that as a condition of approval.
Again, commissioners, the special land use standard I, any discussion? All in favor of accepting, please say aye.
Aye.
Is accepted.
Item J is that the planning commission may require additional landscape buffers or screening beyond what is required in section 4.26 of the zoning ordinance. We've talked about this a little bit already. They've exceeded their front yard landscaping requirements, which you guys have indicated you're comfortable with some flexibility on. The trees in the rear on the north side of the site will be kept there, and we will check with our staff to ensure that those are trees that would survive.
Commissioners, any special land use standard I, or J, excuse me, any discussion on that? All in favor of accepting, please say aye.
Aye.
G is accepted.
Item K, the owner and/or licensees shall maintain clear, adequate records and documentation demonstrating that all cannabis and cannabis products have been obtained from and are provided to other permitted and licensed operations. The city shall have the right to examine, monitor, and audit such records and documentation, which shall be made available to the city upon request. In their application, the applicant did outline their inventory management and record-keeping procedures and software. It records information relating to transportation, inventory records, refill reports, sales transaction records, disposals, scanned documents, and how it retains all the information and things like that. You know, again, this appears to be adequate and would be sufficient to satisfy the standard. And we also added a condition of approval that would, you know, require the ongoing compliance with the standard as well.
Does your Rogers, Rogers City, right?
Yep.
Does that use the same Proteus 420?
It does, yes.
And have you ever had any problems with it or anything along that lines?
No. Only problem we ever had up there was a camera going down once, one out of the third and seventh of the normal square cameras.
Commissioners, special land use standard K, any discussion? All in favor of accepting it, as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All necessary building electrical, plumbing, and mechanical permits shall be obtained for any portion of the structure which contains wood, foot, wiring, lighting, and or water devices for the operation, drilling, or harvesting of marijuana. Then those activities will occur on the site, so generally speaking, this standard is not applicable. Although we would remind the commission that, again, the, you know, I mean, there would be a condition of approval that would require compliance with any and all permits for... They will need to pull building permits and electrical and stuff as they work inside the building and rearrange stuff, the build walls and, you know, install outlets and all that kind of stuff, there's going to be permits for that, so there was your name to get those.
Commissioners, the special land use standard L, any discussion? All in favor of accepting it, please say aye.
Aye.
Standard is accepted.
The last standard, mercifully, M. In the event of any conflict, the terms of this ordinance are preempted, and the controlling authority shall be statutory regulations set forth by the MTRMA and the adopted rules for adult use marijuana establishments, which are from the state of Michigan. And that would also be addressed as a condition of approval.
Commissioners, again, the special land use standard M, any discussion? All in favor of accepting it, as written, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll take it, maybe, as we've reached the end of all of the standards and approvals and all that, this is the time, if anybody in the public would like to make a comment. Yes, sir, please come on up and give us your name and address.
My name is Justin Quitz, and I'm here in regards to Riverside Auto Wash, 1941 West Main Street, Millwall. We're your neighbors right to the east, and I guess our only primary concern is in that sudden influx in the beginning. You know, we appreciate you guys are reaching out to Tractor Supply, but will there be security outside or in regards to our front lot with the massive traffic? You know, we have our vacuum stations out front for our customers, we're worried about people snagging in and then walking over.
Right, taking them free parking?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the sudden influx in the beginning.
We will have our employees keeping an eye on it.
Outside.
Yeah, absolutely.
Will you have, that's a good question, will you have security out there that first month or so, or, you know, depending on weather, obviously, and other things?
Yeah, it'll be an employee that's kind of dual-purpose, helping check people in, traffic, and walk around. And then like, security cameras too, of course, they go around the entire building. And I think they go, it's either 15 or 30 feet out, I believe it's 30 feet, or hopefully it's way a bit out too. But, yeah, absolutely.
Contact, invoice, if you have a problem, please call us.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good question. Hopefully a good answer too. Anybody else? Okay, having said that, I'm going to close the public portion of this meeting and go to recommendations. Andy, you want to go through the recommendations here?
So based on all of the information submitted and all the analysis in our report, we did recommend the planning commission approve the site plan and special land use. So I'm just going to walk through the conditions here, there is a bunch of them, so if you're not tired of reading them yet, you can...
If your voice holds up.
Yeah. So the first four are conditions we put on everything. The first one, prior to the issuance of any permits, they have to pay on the application fees. Two, they have to comply with any requirements of the DPW engineer and other city officials. Three, it must comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, and copies of all applicable permits shall be submitted to the city. And four is similar, although it requires continual compliance with those same standards. Item five, the applicant shall submit a copy of a provisional license issued by the city of Lowell pursuant to chapter 28 of the Lowell Code of Ordinances. And the facility shall not open until appropriate operating licenses have been obtained from the city of Lowell and the state of Michigan. So as I mentioned, they're kind of in this early-ish stages of their application where after they secure the special land use, there's still more licensing that they have to obtain from both the city and the state. So this addresses the land use and zoning part of it, but it doesn't, you know, they're not ready to open tomorrow at this point that this is approved. So that requires that, obviously, they have to secure all those permits and submit copies of those to the city prior to opening the store. External lighting shall be as indicated on the site plan and comply with lighting sections of lighting standards of section 4.24, 19.03C of the zoning ordinance. Seven, when loading and unloading space shall be included on the site plan in accordance with section 19.08. And that can just be a simple note where you just indicate, they just indicate on the site where that loading area is going to be on that north side of the building. And that would be sufficient there. Site shall comply with chapter 20. We talked about this earlier, landscaping buffers and/or rebuilds shall be continuously maintained to ensure that proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public private property, so that's that ongoing maintenance of the landscaping we talked about. The security plan shall address the items outlined and the other memorandum that we submitted that is confidential. Number 11, marijuana and accessories shall be located within enclosed and locked areas accessible on all sides and equipped with locks that permit access only by the licensed operator or their employees, agents of ALARA, law enforcement officers, and roof and personnel, other unauthorized individuals as reviewed and approved by the city. 12, the applicant shall submit to the city a summary of procedures for how and where it gets received. 13, which we discussed briefly already, the applicant shall insult additional filtration in the building to the satisfaction of the city should there be any complaints regarding odor. 14, all waste receptacles containing that product in the trash enclosure shall be secured and locked at all times. 15, the establishment shall not sell alcoholic beverages or tobacco products. 16, it shall comply at all times and in all circumstances with the MTRMA and applicable rules for adult use marijuana establishments. 17, owner and/or licensees shall maintain clear net foot records and documentation demonstrating that all cannabis or cannabis products have been obtained from and are provided to other permitted and licensed operations. The city shall have the right to examine, monitor, and audit such records and documentation, which shall be made available to the city upon request. And 18, in the event of any conflict in terms of the city approval, in terms of this approval, are preempted and the controlling authority shall be the statutory regulations set forth by the MTRMA and the adopted rules for adult use marijuana establishments. So you'll see a lot of these conditions, other stuff that's in the ordinance already, but I find it helpful to kind of lay it all out like that. There are a couple items that the applicant will need to submit to the city for staff review, like lighting and some of this, some of this security stuff, landscaping, et cetera, so we'll be taking a look at that at the staff level and working with my general landscape designer, and I don't think your engineer's going to have any input, but if it comes up, we'll certainly be in touch with your appropriate departments, which is a few for everybody.
Thank you, Andy. Having said that then, commissioners, are there any questions of Andy at this point? Then I would make the, I'll make a motion that we approve the Cafe, Met Cafe site plan and special land use for approval. Is there a second?
Sorry?
And having said that, I'll add to that amendment that we also tack on all 18 conditional items to that amendment. Any discussion? So can we have a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Godula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrabbin?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Chair Barker?
Yes. Thank you, the site plan and special land use is approved for the Met Cafe. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Welcome to... Next order of business is a public hearing for the commercial and industrial districts. We have, over the last two years, we have been updating our zoning ordinances, and we are gratefully coming rapidly to a close of updating the whole zoning ordinance. We still have definitions to go, which is mostly the work of Andy on that one, but this will bring us pretty close to the end of that process, and well within the five-year review standard, so we still got a couple of years to rest on our worlds, hopefully, so. Andy's going to take us through these standards, or these districts, and we're going to use the red outline edition that you have in the pack, it's that way we will see the differences. It follows all the black and white stuff, you'll eventually come to a red version. I think we start with neighborhood business district?
Yes, we started with chapter 10, C1 Neighborhood Business District.
That's on page one, in the back garden, okay? There's no red line on that one, but it is chapter 10, C1 Neighborhood Business District.
Yep. So these are unchanged from the previous meeting. The planning commission didn't request any changes here, so I'm going to walk through relatively quickly each of these districts here just to kind of refresh what we've already discussed ones. So for the C1 Neighborhood Business District, this is only a couple properties in the city. We haven't really proposed any changes to this section, other than we're clarifying on the second page here, the standards for front yard, side yard, and rear yard are minimum standards, so it's the minimum setback. And the building height is a maximum building height, absolutely, we have a minimum building height of 35 feet. On chapter 11, which is C2, that's the downtown area, generally where we are now. We did make a few changes here, probably the most notable of which is that we've seen over the last few years some applications for special land use for like second and third floor residential apartments or condos or something. That's something that I'm proposing that we, that we permit by right instead of by special land use. That's something that the mesh plan strongly encourages. As planners, we encourage that kind of thing downtown. So that's a change there, you'll see on page four, what was subsection, was shown as subsection F, residential dwelling in the same building as commercial use, that's deleted from section 11.03, and it's inserted into section 11.2, so we just removed it from special land uses to uses permitted by right. And we also had added as uses permitted by right to mixed-use developments and galleries and museums, because those are both, one, you got to have some of those downtown, and two, again, they're generally contributing positively towards a downtown development-type environment. We also have a few proposed changes at 11.04. One of them prohibits front yard, you know, front yard parking downtown, that's not what we want there, obviously. Buildings having the primary entrance facing the sidewalk, and then again, the same minimum and maximum language is added to the table here in 11.04, which really helps us from an administrative standpoint to explain the standards to people. And then also, we added in a section on page five that while display of merchandise is acceptable, it cannot be located so that it obstructs the sidewalk or impairs the flow of pedestrians if they walk up the non-street. Questions up here, or can I keep going?
Yeah, sounds good.
We've gone three, how far do you have? So page six, check 12, C3, that's the area we were just talking about here on the west side of downtown. side of downtown. Again, most of the changes here are limited. We did delete some provisions from, actually, removed provisions from 12.04 to 12.05, tractor hop outdoor storage and display, same clarification when it comes to minimum yards and maximum lot coverages and setbacks and things like that. We deleted the inclusion of building and parking areas from your lot coverage standards, that makes it almost impossible for anybody to comply with that, so we took that out. And that's about it for that one. On 12A, which is light industrial, largely unchanged, except that in 12A.04, I'm on page 11 now, we eliminated a parking requirement that prohibits parking areas within 25 feet of the rear lot line. And then we also deleted a couple of standards here, not because there's anything wrong with them, but because it's already dealt with and stated in other cases in the ordinance, and so the effort to be less redundant, we took those two items out. And then in the table again, if you're noticing a pattern here, we again added the minimum and maximum language, took off the building and parking area inclusion in the lot coverage standards in chapter 13, I'm on page 13 now. We added a standard in section 13.04, which would require some screening for the planning commission in terms of the review of the site plan. We again deleted the parking requirement that required a setback for our parking lot, and made the same changes to the table as far as the minimum yards and maximum building heights and the inclusion for building and parking areas in your lot coverage standard. And that's about it. Nothing has changed from the previous meeting, and absent a few, you know, my other things here and there, that we're not fundamentally changing what that, what any of these districts do or how they work, but it will certainly make life easier for us from an administrative standpoint, writing our staff reports and things, it'll just, the standards are clear, and so we'll be able to provide better and clearer guidance to the public and applicants when we're doing these sorts of reports.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Andy. Any questions from the public at all? Any thoughts? Okay.
Public?
Oh, we have two. We have two.
I couldn't see.
Reporters are public too. In that case, I would make the motion that we adopt the chapters 10, 1, C1, Neighborhood Business District, chapter 11, C2, Central Business District, chapter 12, C3, General Business District, chapter 12A, Industrial Light, Light Industrial District, chapter 13, Industrial District. And that's it. To be forwarded on to the city council for approval, disapproval, return back to us for changes, any of those kinds of things, but at this point, we've done our job, and I want to, before we get too far here, I want to thank the commission and Andy. As I said, we've been at this for two years, so I'll make that motion gladly, and would entertain a second. I'll support. And any discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Godula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrabbin?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Thank you. Our final bit of new business is preparing the planning commission annual report to council, and I have no clue on that one.
That can provide some background there. So the Planning Enabling Act requires that the planning commission prepare an annual report every year and submit it to the legislative body, in this case, city council. So that is something that needs to be done, so I don't know if there's a commission volunteer wants to write it, otherwise we need to write it, or I don't typically, who would be in charge of that, but it's just something we have to do to satisfy the Planning Enabling Act.
And then is that turned in to the council?
Correct.
Is that the idea?
Yep. And the intent is just to keep your council or your township board or whoever it is informed of something going on with the planning commission.
Amanda, would you be opposed to putting together?
I can provide you with a template.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate that greatly, and you can certainly work with the Andy Director actively. And then if we will, if maybe we'll present it at the council meeting in February, first of February, whatever that first meeting is, that'll give us a couple of weeks to come up with something. And if you would, I guess, send it, provided it's not hugely likely, send it to all the home commission members, please.
They're not terribly complicated.
No.
So it's not, it's not so heavy to do.
But that would walk. Well, I don't either, to be honest. Well, I did it my former life down on Casco Township, but it was, I knew it was coming, so it was a little bit easier, along with 12 other commissions working at the same time, so it was, you know, pretty much.
Usually it's just me telling them, "Yep, we did do it."
Exactly. Well, thank you, yeah. Thank you, Andy, I appreciate it. Thanks. Having said that, staff, Sue, anything?
No, thanks, sir.
Mike, anything? Andy? Anything further? Thank you for your patience. Andy Taylor?
This is Whitney, by the way, so you see her name on your staff reports all the time now. She does a ton of writing for them. She's been interning with us for a year and a half.
Something like that.
She is full-time now, congratulations, that's a few weeks ago.
Good.
So at least probably it would be good to have her, now here she helps full-time with the marijuana ordinance and with the report and all the stuff we do, so I'd be able to have her on. You'll be seeing her name on lots of things moving forward, so.
Good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Have we completed going through everything?
The only thing that, the zoning ordinance review, the only thing that we are missing, I believe, at this point, will be definitions.
I thought we have, like, site plan review or one other chapter to look at. It would not be complicated, so there might be one more to do, but I got to go back and check my list.
I thought there was one more, like you said, it wasn't.
Yeah.
It didn't need hardly much, three, four, five.
Well, let's put it, that's a good point, let's put that on the February if we can, and then I'll give you several months to do the definitions, okay?
I mean, keeping those fairly up to date as we go, so I don't know that we'll have a ton to do there, but we'll certainly have to go through and make sure all of our land uses are defined and all of our...
All marijuana stuff is in there.
Some of that is already in there.
Yeah, that's all for the news, so. Commissioners, does that sound good? We'll take a look at whatever is left over in February, and then hopefully have the open meeting in March, and that will bring us to the conclusion of it as far as we go.
I have a question also. Is the intent to get each of us a three-ring binder? And if so, I would suggest that maybe we put it on a USB or instead to save paper. And I, binder's good, but in a technical age, it's quicker just to plug it in, and you can zoom right in and save it on paper.
Yeah, I would rather not spend money on paper, so we can look at, we can look at those options. One, something I want to even mention the board is, as we go forward, I'd like to get away from sending you paper plans. Would you have any reservation if we just sent you, you know, sent you the PDF ahead of time so you can have it?
I would rather have that.
Fair enough. We can do that, because I would like to, we spent a lot of money on paper, if I can reduce paper costs, I'd like to.
Mike, I would prefer paper, just from the standpoint that when I'm going through it, it's a lot easier to have.
Sure. We can, yeah, we can do it any way we want, but if people want it digital, I would be glad to give it to you digitally.
And that's... With things like this, you might just have one for the year.
That's, yeah, we could do that. Maybe that's, you know, I mean, if you want paper, we'll give you paper, but...
Prints are no cost to us, right?
Right.
It's on the applicant.
Yeah.
But you're even seeing more and more communities not even requiring them to submit prints anymore.
I personally, we've got our tablets, I like them.
And unfortunately, we can't provide tablets to the planning commission, but we can give it to you.
The only reason why I would prefer print is because when I'm going through it, I go through it ahead of time, and I have questions, and otherwise I have to print it all out.
No, and that's fine, we can, yeah, if you still want to print, if you, I'll have Suzie, great job to you, if you still want a paper copy.
Yeah, this here, though, I would, as long as the applicant is paying for it, you really need that kind of detail.
Right.
To look at, and the applicant pays for it, so to me, that doesn't make any sense to try to put it on a small screen.
Right. Well, we can do it any way you want, yeah. Sometimes, you're seeing, like I said, you're seeing more and more communities not requiring them to submit this anymore.
Yeah, well, and so we reach out to each of the Commissioners as far as I'm...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're seeing more, I mean, my former community does not take paper plans anymore.
Well, Sue can reach out to each of the Commissioners, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, whatever the preference is.
Yep, we'll do it any way.
Doesn't matter to me. Having said that, then, Tony, do you have any other comments?
No, thanks.
Amanda?
Good.
All right.
No comments?
Dave?
Good.
Mike? I just, I want to say a couple of things here real quickly. Thank you again for electing me chair, I certainly appreciate that. And I also wanted to say thanks to Andy and his staff and everybody else there on the marijuana ordinances that we constructed, and we saw the outcome tonight. I think it actually went about as well as it could. Obviously, this one was not one building from scratch and all those kinds of things, which happened to make it a lot easier, frankly. And, you know, maybe in the future, we can look at cutting down the number of standards or something along that line, because it is a laundry list. But on the other hand, we want to make sure we get it right. So that's, I think a credit to everybody that worked on it, it really was a good job. So thank you very much, and everybody have a great new year. Thank you. Having said that, I take a motion for adjournment. And support?
I'll support that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.